All right, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
It's for America.
To the republic where it stands. One nation, one God. Individual liberty and justice for all.
Awesome.
I want to explain that, Kent.
Yeah, the feedback we were hearing wasn't really feedback. Todd Tulkey is in Washington DC on state school board, national school board business, and he has been kind enough to take time out of his busy schedule there to join us for the meeting. So, we will be hearing from him from time to time, and because he has joined, not physically being here, each one of our votes tonight will be a roll call vote, so it will drag things out maybe just a little bit, but worth the inconvenience. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held December 10th, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, wait, sorry. Geez, I already forgot. Tulkey? You need to vote yes or no on that?
Yes.
Parker?
Aye.
Alberti, aye. Nicholson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
All right. We have one person who has signed up to address the board, and that is on an agenda item, so we will have that when we get to that point in the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Vote on that, Tulkey?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Alberti, aye. Nicholson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
If I forget any of you, just let me know. Thank you. And good news report, Deanne.
Take you back to two weeks ago, if you remember, we introduced you to three Edison Middle School students who were developing plans for an app to help reduce childhood obesity. Their advanced thought processes and problem solving took them to the world of what if, and so they had a lot of planning, but had not yet gotten into actually writing the code or creating an app. Well, this week, we wanted to introduce you to two Patrick Henry Middle School students who are actually doing the coding that would make an app, or in their case, a video game actually work. The assignment suggested that students write between 50 and 100 lines of code that would create four to seven functions in a video game, which the snippet is about this long, but it takes a lot of code to make that happen. So, eighth graders Riley Ross and Joseph Van Bean took the expectation of that assignment beyond the basics, and in doing so, they helped their classmates, and their teacher says they even helped him problem solve at a higher level. So, we're going to invite the information communication and technology teacher Jason Whiting and the two students, Riley and Joseph, to come forward and show us a little bit about what they've been doing, because it's very cool.
All right, so like Deanne said, so I'm piloting for the district this year a new curriculum through code.org, and I went to training in Phoenix last year for a week. And I'd had a little bit of exposure teaching coding and programming from even back when I was teaching fourth grade, and these eighth graders, this curriculum has assumed that they've had it for three years, and they had had zero experience with the JavaScript to the level that we were doing. So, when I saw the good news report opportunity, I wanted to show what these two had done, because they had taken it to a different level on their own. And so, if you look on the screen, this is Riley's, just as an example, this is going to mean not a lot to anybody outside of our classroom, okay? But that code right there is what turns, created this game. So, to see, we all see video games, but we hardly ever see the code behind it. And then we got Joseph's over here. The level of complexity that these two created, like Deanne said, is above what I was able to do until they taught me. And they both became leaders in the classroom. They were teaching other students on their own. Joseph's game looks like this, and because he really took all the feedback to heart from all the other students that played his game, he made it extremely hard, and I haven't beat it yet. So, it's, but really wanted to celebrate what these two have done and give you guys an opportunity to talk to them and let them explain what they were doing.
Riley, you want to start?
Sure. Hi.
You can explain anything.
All right, so basically, I just decided to make a really simple kind of game, and I mean, it's, how do you touch? Click, okay, yes. So basically, you just jump up and down, try to get the coins, those add two, and then if you touch the bees or wasps, they take away one point. Yeah, so goal is to get to 50, and then it displays a message that you won, got to your spaceship, and then once the score hits 20, it adds a second enemy to make it a little bit more difficult, but otherwise, it's pretty simple.
Simple in gameplay, but what he wrote behind it with his conditionals and the different format was just a different level than a lot of our students, and he did it, a lot of it on his own.
Sure.
Go ahead.
All right. So, my game was based off of Space Invaders, which is a very fun game I liked to play when I was younger, and...
You were younger.
I put a lot of effort and code into this, and I was expecting to get a little bit farther into it, but didn't have much time and couldn't really use my laptop at home to go ahead and get more advantage to it. It has a very basic creation behind it. It has over 30-some variables just to keep it rolling in nice and smooth. Fine tuning it took about an hour or so overall, and, let's see, I put a lot of effort into making sure that the game is hard to beat, since everybody figured out a way to cheat it. And, let me refresh this real quick. So, what everybody used to do is they would go up and down like this, and try to go like over and over again, but, so I made it that it's impossible to go back and forth, because it's going to shoot at you, and it's going to make it a little bit more difficult than holding down the trigger. And, as you see, you take a lot of damage in life, but it does play decent.
And he can play longer than me.
Yeah. I know the controller seemed a little bit difficult, but I made it so it's a little bit like that, so it's more feeling in like a free moving space, and it allows for more mobility, and, yeah, that's about it.
So, I had the students create their games, and then I had all my other ICT students from sixth, seventh, and the other eighth grade classes play their games and then give feedback, and they were, especially Joseph, was reading his feedback and taking every line very personal, and going in and changing things and wanting to explain to people why he did what he did. And between the two of them, they both created games that were voted probably the two more enjoyable games to play, and they just liked how everything they did, and it was all on their own. Questions?
Questions for...
I'm curious, prior to your ICT class, have you, had you ever experimented with coding at all, just kind of in your spare time or read about it, or did you know you were interested in it before you took the class?
When we joined the class, I was kind of confused a bit on how to do it at first, but I got a little bit used to it. I think the most hardest part about it was that I was going into, going into it without any idea of like what I was going to do, and so when I started realizing that you can go into like this little extra level at the end, I started creating my own games and started building off of that, and that's where I kind of came up with this, and, yeah.
As far as I go, I really only before this, like those code.org, those days, and those were fun stuff, and I just, and I've always wanted to try it, doing code, and I've never, I've never really had the motivation to take the time to try to learn how to do it, so I really liked this class because it was just forcing me to take the time, you know? That was good.
Joseph, you said it took an hour to fine tune. How long for both Riley and Joseph, did it take to create the games, would you say?
Between class time, what you did?
Oh, between class time, I kind of took time just polishing up the code to make sure like everything would run smoothly. So, like, I added new stuff so it would look a little bit more nice, and just the controls is kind of not just slippery, and, yeah.
How many hours you think you had?
Oh, how many hours? I kind of added two to three hours at most.
I pretty much just did all that in class, so I'd probably say about five hours.
And that's on top of them in class also being like a better, like, they were, they have a good job explaining to other students. I mean, they were the teachers in the classroom alongside of me, to the point where the students were going to them, which was awesome to watch. So, they did a lot of stuff in class, but still had time to go help everybody else.
Do you foresee doing more with coding? Like, is this something you're really interested in, that you might think of either career-wise or high school class-wise, you might be more interested in some computer science classes?
Yeah, sort of like with high school, there's a lot more classes to choose from. Those CP classes, like, I think Lincoln also has a lot of different things. Lincoln has some good classes with like a code and Java, and there's stuff to expand on, expand the knowledge, and that's like, with...
I was thinking more of going into doing robotics and combining the kind of coding that I've like learned here to make stuff with robots, and like combining the computer and robotics, and I'm just more thinking of going and head designing cool robots and like machinery that you find to mess around with.
Awesome. Very cool. Nice job.
It's very neat. It's fascinating. Anything that you don't understand is fascinating, so I really appreciate that you're looking at sort of two different pathways, but that's been birthed from the same, from the same class, so I'm very pleased. A lot of fun. Keep up the hard work. You're both very talented, so thank you.
Thanks for presenting.
All right, we'll move on. There are no conflicts of interest tonight. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote, Tulkey?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Alberti, aye. Nicholson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
All right, that carries. And supplemental consent agenda, nine A, approval of claims to Sanford.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call on that, Tulkey?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Alberti, aye. Nicholson?
Abstain.
Abstain. Ryder?
Abstain.
Okay, that motion carries. And nine B, approval of claims to Avera Health.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Tulkey?
Aye.
Parker?
Abstain.
Alberti, aye. Nicholson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
All right, and that brings us to the reports. The superintendent, Dr. Maher.
Thank you. We have several reports tonight. The first report tonight will be a recommendation for a revision on the calendar. Bringing that to us will be Dr. Noel.
Good evening, and tonight I bring a calendar committee recommendation for a change to the 2019-2020 school year calendar. First and foremost, the calendar committee, which has brought this recommendation forward to the school board, has made up of 29 total members of the calendar committee, including parents, teachers, all employee groups that are represented, school board members, and administration. The 2019-2020, or 2020 calendar change request is a request made by the high school administration on behalf of the high school students and staff, and the two days that would be impacted are two days to ask or request that they are not in attendance, October 7th, 2019, and February 3rd, 2020. And I'll go into some of the rationale and background of that. First part is, on those two days, October 7th and February 3rd, they are currently days that the high school has an early start, early dismissal. The middle school and elementary schools are not in session on those days, so the only group that is in session is the high school students with the early start, early dismissal. The elementary and middle school have in-service in the morning, and in the afternoon, they have the parent teacher conferences options, if they don't have the multiple night options of the parent teacher conferences. So, the calendar committee has worked to make the changes, and we have worked very closely with calendars, once they're approved by the school board, to not go back and make changes on specific days that we have had previously off. So, parents that have gone ahead and looked at our school calendar that are out on the websites, once we have posted that, and they plan their vacations and days off around those calendars, we also kept that in mind very much so that we did not change days or alter days on there that would impact any of those families adversely as we went through this process. So, those two days are days that middle school and elementary are not in session, it would just be high school with the early start, early dismissal. We did look at a couple other things in the calendar committee as well, attendance, and I can go through, we looked at days the Friday prior, because this past year it was on a Friday, the Friday prior's attendance, the day prior's attendance, the Monday after attendance, and the following week Friday, and there is a significant drop in attendance on those days that we have the early start, early dismissal with the high school. It occurs at two different times throughout the year, with about 200 more students not being in attendance on that early start, early dismissal. Part of that was in doing fact, talking to the high school principals, that with the elementaries and middle school not being in session, some of those older siblings needing to watch the younger sibling at home, or families seeing the opportunity, if neither of those two elementary and middle schools are in session, to take that as a family time, and the high school student would then not be in attendance. So, that's part of the reasons why some of those increased, plus the early start. The other time that we see that is with the semester tests, but they're very well attended on those days with the early start, early dismissal. Another thing we looked at is the impact of in-service, because the high schools, when they have that early start, early dismissal, they have in-service time. The in-services usually then, by the time they dismiss students and had lunch, started around 1:30, and they had between an hour and a half to two hours of in-service time, which hampered some of that time in there. We also looked at that, that if we went to this recommendation by the committee, we would eliminate one of those early starts, early dismissals on March 27th, that would just revert back to a normal school day. The impact on minutes, we are still at the high school level, well in excess of the required minutes by the state of South Dakota. Those required minutes for high school being 57,750 minutes. Our closest traditional school would be Lincoln High School when I evaluated that, and even with that change, there'll still be over five days in excess of those minutes. The closest of which being New Tech High. New Tech would three days in excess, that's with that earlier release time that they have, so they can get back to those representing schools, Roosevelt, Lincoln, and High School with the bus schedule. But Lincoln High School would be the closest of the three traditional schools, and they'll still be well in excess of five days over the minimum required. If you look at that calendar, those are the days that are in question, so of course, that October date, which would be the 7th, the February date, which would be the 3rd, high school requesting to not have the students in session, and then the 27th of March would be a day that would revert back to just a normal traditional day for the high school. So, we'd eliminate three of those early start, early dismissals. So, the requests coming forward from the calendar committee would be to not have the high school students in attendance, which would be the same as elementary and middle school on October 7th and February 3rd, and the high school then would have in-service in the morning and in the afternoon on that day. One would be building, one would be district, and then we would take the March 27th early dismissal date, and that would revert to a normal school day. The administrative recommendation is to adopt the revisions to the 2019-2020 school calendar as presented and brought forward by the calendar committee, and I'd stand by for questions.
And questions for Dr. Noel.
I have a question, but I know when we were talking about the difference in the number of days, I hadn't thought about the difference between each high school, so maybe you just want to comment on why Lincoln is different than Roosevelt or Washington?
And the question on that with the minutes, you will see as you go through there, there's a distinct difference, and part of that significantly comes through the passing time. Lincoln with a longer building, the required passing time to be able to get from one into the building to the other, and the state does not allow you to count passing time into the minutes of the school, where Washington per se, it's a little easier with the passing time there, especially with the 1,800 students and just the configuration of the building. And so, when you just take those passing times with one additional minute, when you go throughout the whole year, it does add up to quite a bit of time, because each of those has a start and release time that is the same amount of minutes within the day. It's truly that passing time within the day that makes the difference.
Thank you.
With New Tech High, they have a little bit of a different schedule due to the busing piece.
Other questions or comments? If not, may I have a motion to adopt the recommendation, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I think this would be really good for our high school teachers to feel like their in-service times in the past maybe haven't been utilized as well as they could have been, and so now they'll actually have some dedicated time to feel like they aren't rushing to get students out of the building and then get to their meeting and eat lunch, and so I think they'll, they'll be very happy with the time that they have and feel like it's well spent.
I'm assuming this will be posted on the website in the next couple days?
Upon the approval of the board in the next few days here, Ally Workis will work with myself, and we will get that reposted on the website.
Okay, very good. No other discussion than roll call vote, Tulkey?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Alberti, aye. Nicholson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, and capital improvement plan update, Dr. Maher.
Okay, our second report tonight will be a capital improvement plan update. You might recall, we'll have an update for you, the second board meeting of every month going forward. We have several people to present tonight. I'll start off by kicking it to Jeff Kreider from Operational Services.
I'm going to keep mine very brief, but it's kind of exciting time that we can start presenting some of the drawings that, and basically, four months of work that we've done so far on the high school, and we've got a presentation for a preliminary schematic design, the architects will be presenting. The organization of the building is really coming together, organization of site, and I think it's something that the community is going to be really proud of, and I've got two architects here from the design team that will be presenting. We have Vanessa Schut from DLR Group, she's the lead designer of the project, and Steve Jastrom with Architecture Incorporated, he's a project manager of the overall concept. So, I'm going to turn it over to them, but I just want to say thank you for the design team, the, all the input from all the staff that's been part of this. Just remember, this is still pretty early in the process, and we have a lot to go over. I think Vanessa will kind of hit on where we're going and what it will be, so a lot to do yet, but this is a kind of an exciting time, so Vanessa.
Thank you. Yeah, I do want to reiterate that thank you to the steering committee and the design development committee. They've put a lot of time into meetings. We've had pretty regular meetings, and their input has been extremely valuable. It's your school, so we want to make sure that we hear all of your ideas. And one of the very first things that we did was we created a we see statement, or a vision for the new school. I joke with the design development group and the steering committee that they will have this memorized by the end of the project, we start every meeting with that. I'm going to read it here. "We see a safe, technology-driven, adaptable environment where our diversity-rich community of inquiry-based learners can take pride and ownership of their education while continuing to champion the Sioux Falls School District tradition of excellence." There are some great words in there that we have utilized to help inspire and make decisions throughout the entire process. I really like to highlight the inquiry-based, adaptable, safe, and champions. Those are powerful words that have helped guide us throughout the process. We're going to walk through the site, the building, floor plan, and then fly a little bit around the exterior of the building, so.
Yeah, good evening. I would like to add one other thing of all the meetings we've had, but we had some very good discussions with some high school students, and I wanted to mention that some of the concepts and ideas in the new high school are coming from those high school meetings, which was, which was very productive. I'll talk a minute just on the site plan. Here we go, sit for next one. Let me borrow your mouse. Let me borrow the mouse here a minute. I did want to start out with just an overall map of the city to kind of give everybody the connection of where we're at. As you look at this site drawing, north is to your, to your left, and so Interstate 29 is what, what comes up here this way. The big bold red line, by the way, is the current bus route that comes up and it goes to Southeast Tech, which is located right here. And just to remind everybody that the, the new site is just immediately west of Southeast Tech School, just a little west of the existing Career Tech Academy. The main address for the new school will be on Marion Road, which is right here, and then Maple and Madison are in between. So, that, again, this was, ends up being a great location with connection to the Southeast Tech School and the Career Tech Academy, and of course, Marion Road is a great access to the interstate. Go to the next one here. Yeah, I'll do that. This is just an enlarged drawing of the site plan that I wanted to highlight a few main concepts for. You going to make it a little bigger? Okay, that's good. As you look at this drawing as well, north is to your left over here, so just on the east side of this street, this is Terry Avenue, is where Southeast Tech is at. Career Tech Academy is just over to this side. This is actually Marion Road, which is on the west side of the facility, running in the north side direction. The city was very clear that the main access for our facility needs to come off of Marion Road at this center point of a section line. Again, the distances that are between main road accesses, there will be a traffic light at this location in the future. What worked out very well after many options is that with a building kind of located at this location, the southeast corner of the site, all of the practice fields and athletic fields are on the, on the north side. So, you can see here, this is the main athletic field, running track, et cetera. The tennis courts are here in the middle, and then there's three other practice courts that go there. And it's kind of important, because this sort of set the tone for the design of the school, because you'll see in a minute that this is the athletic portion of the school, gymnasiums, locker rooms, so they have easy access to the practice fields. The music and performing arts is right up here on the east side of the school, again, very easy access for the band to come out and practice in their practice fields. And then the other thing is the, the main entry to the school for the students is, is over here, it's on the west side of the building, but we've rotated it some to help with the northwest winds, which of course, we will be experiencing again very soon. And all of the student parking is around on the west side, we're anticipating the number of program, of spaces required in your building program. And then the staff parking is over here on the south side of the building, again, separated from the student parking area. This parking works pretty well whenever there are events coming for the athletic fields or tennis, et cetera. And then there are different bus drop-off areas for, like for example, an important part, the RISE program, there's a separate bus drop-off and entry just for them on this side of the school. Then I think we can get to the floor plan, that'll make more sense to you from there. Go ahead, Vanessa. You want to bring this up here?
Yeah. Okay. I apologize, it's a little bit washed out, but we're going to be talking big picture, so hopefully we'll, you'll be able to see. This is the main entrance, right here. Just to the left is the administration. The idea of eyes on the site is important for school security, so we have several offices seeing who's coming to the building before they arrive at the building. It also can see the main entrance into the site from this location. As you come into the building, this is the law, the commons or the cafeteria, flanked with the performing arts to the, to the east, and as Steve mentioned, the athletics over here. One thing that the site allowed us to do was have a top-loading gym, which will be a nice feature. When you come in, there'll be a walking track around in seats on Across the cafeteria is the food service and building support spaces. And as I mentioned, auditorium here with the music support system or support and classrooms located in this location right here. Behind the auditorium are some industrial tech courses or classrooms, yet to be truly defined in that space. One of the things that he mentioned was really important to design, I can't believe I didn't mention at the very beginning, was the students' desire to have outdoor space, a secured space where they can go outside. So located right here is actually a secured courtyard for students to utilize during the day. It's on either side of the media center and the cafeteria, so they can go outside and eat, probably not on days like tomorrow, but on nice days. And classroom teachers can take their kids out there to do different activities. As we move down into the classroom area, you'll notice that there are five what we're calling learning suites. It's a space that has general classrooms, science classrooms, collaboration space, small group spaces, and really kind of helps to break down the scale of the building and ensures that all, the majority of the classrooms have access to collaboration spaces and natural They're held together with a spine. The spine is composed of the media center, a very active space, and it also has three what we're calling incubator labs. They're located in between each learning suite and have access to that media center. So it's a very collaborative type space. Located just on the other side of the media center is the RISE program and then applied arts on this level. So that composes the first level. And this over here actually represents the lower level. So we have the gym, the auxiliary gym, wrestling, and then the locker rooms. So you will have access out on grade on this side of the building right here, but this will be retaining. So we're taking advantage of the natural hill that's there to allow for that top-loading gym, which is always fun. We'll move to the upper level next. So the upper level, again, you see those five learning suites. We did place all the science classrooms on the upper level of the learning suites to allow for departmentalization as well as ease of, it's easier construction when you're dealing with all the exhausting that they're doing. It's more cost-effective to have them on an upper level. And this is open to below, so they can look down into that media center. Then we have art and one more in family consumer science classroom. So that represents the overall building footprint and how they're working.
How about windows in the classroom?
Yep, so all the classrooms have windows to the exterior. There might be a few, one or two that don't, but the majority of them do. They also have transparency from the classroom to the collaboration space to allow for educators to supervise students who are out there. But we also have a tuck-around point where there's a place to go in an event of a drill. So really thinking about security and how the building compartmentalizes. As you mentioned, you know, when you look at safety and security, each one of these houses has the ability to lock down in an event of a drill so that you can compartmentalize the building and clear it in an orderly fashion. So questions about the overall floor plan?
On the second floor with the media center, that's open. So where are the, I mean, where are the hallways? Isn't that a stupid question?
No, it's not a stupid hallway. So one thing that is important is to leverage as much circulation as we can for educational space. So in a typical high school, it's approximately 24% to 26% made up of circulation space. So in the learning suites themselves, we're leveraging that with our collaboration space so that we're getting a larger space to come together. There is a large, wide hallway that runs through here that is the kind of the artery that pulls people to the commons, to the media center, to art and the like. So it is, oh, 14? I think it's about 16 feet wide. So it's a, and there are no lockers in that hallway. So it is, it's really focusing on moving kids fluently through there. So it's a, it's a nice size. And the media center is being defined separate from that hallway. So it's not truly walled off, but there's a definition between those that we've gone through five or six iterations thus far, and you'll see more of that come in the future.
Okay. Is the media center two stories?
Yes.
So we'll go up into that second floor?
Yes, so you'll have the volume to look down into it. Yep.
And the atrium or the courtyard that you were talking about, is that also, can you see the into that from the second floor?
Yes. Yes, there would be windows into that to supervise and see what's going on. So yeah. Yep. Other questions on the plan? Okay. So to begin looking at how we would focus on the exterior of the building, we felt it was really important to look at place. And so we started researching imagery of Sioux Falls, of South Dakota, and these are some of the images that served as inspiration. The way that the water moves through the dark rocks, so you have the light in the dark, the texture of native grasses, the colors of the stone, both from Mount Rushmore and Crazy Horse, the idea of the Black Hills. My advancing isn't working right. Again, looking at the water, and surprisingly, we saw a lot of imagery of eagles. So we took some inspiration from how the texture of their feathers and the contrast of light to dark, which we also saw with the water and the rocks. So that's what really inspired us when we started developing the exterior. We did develop two different concepts of the exterior and shared that with the design development group and the steering committee. And what we're going to show you is a hybrid of the two of them. So we incorporated a couple different things. And so I'm going to jump to our fly-around. Okay, so this is a bird's eye view. As we fly, we're going to move to the southwest corner. So this is Marion Road here, and you can see the parking as Steve mentioned, and the three learning suites that are on this side of the building can step you towards the entry. I will tell you, there is a placeholder color used in this presentation. So since we do not know the school color yet, we are using blue for now. So anything that you see as blue will eventually become the school color so we can tie the branding into the exterior of the building. So don't think that we're just proposing a crazy blue. It's a placeholder. As we move, this is the view from the entrance into the building. So you'll see here, this is the gym and the main entrance. We have a large canopy to pull you back into it. As we move forward, you'll see, as we fly through a tree, we have a higher volume here where we enter utilizing a dark brick in this area. And each window is wrapped in a little bit of precast accent. That ties back into the gymnasium box is going to be made out of precast. And so a combination of precast and brick on that to be more cost-effective, we wanted to bring that precast into the other areas of the building as well. But you can see the nice proportions of those windows. And then we move further back, you can see, these are the learning suites, the ends of them. Since that is west-facing glass, we're proposing a kind of a perforated metal scrim in front of that so that we don't have that glaring west or east sun, either morning or afternoon, coming into those learning suites. So all the classrooms' windows are either north-facing or south-facing, which is great because that's the easiest glass, or easiest orientation to control the lighting within the classrooms. As we loop up, I did want to point out that I forgot to mention right here, you'll notice it actually says logo goes here. We're looking at a precast logo design into the big mass of the gym. So once the mascot's defined or the logo's defined, we can incorporate that into the exterior of the building where we can't have windows, so it creates a visual interest. As we move around, this is the secondary entrance for the RISE program as well as teachers' primary point of entrance. And as we move, we can fly around. You can see that it really does repeat, which is efficient in nature. This is the music area here. And then we come around, this is the service area. There will be some windows developed into this area of the building once we understand exactly how the building is laid out over there. When we can get windows into the kitchen and the teacher lounge, break room, we'll get those incorporated as that develops. The commons has a great view to the north. This is where the students will look out while they're eating lunch, and it's great. If you go out to the site, it's probably one of the better views from the site, so it'll be a nice, nice entrance. And you can see how the gray drops away here. And we are having some windows on the north side of the gym to bring some natural light in there. We are studying the impact of that light so that it doesn't, isn't negative when it comes to performance, but we showed a lot, and we're seeing a lot more of that in newer facilities. And with that, we'll loop back to the front. You can see where that logo is, right there. Questions?
Questions at all.
Very cool.
Again, the plan will change as we evolve and as we meet with teachers again another time.
Another couple times.
More things to go through, but we've made great strides to get to this point, and we're getting, we're getting very close.
Yes. We'll have in-depth teacher meetings starting next month, meeting for an hour with each group to ensure that we're, the details of their given classrooms are working into what they, you know, make it easier for them to deliver curriculum how they want to deliver curriculum. So, and then we'll have a confirmation of that, of that, a follow-up meeting shortly thereafter. So their input is vital.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. May I have a motion to acknowledge the update on the capital improvement plan?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Looks really cool.
Yes.
It's exciting to see what a new high school looks like.
And I'd just like to really thank all the staff and students who have participated in this because it's really taken a lot of their time to do this, but we're hopefully going to do this right and continue to work on that, as Vanessa said, to adjust when we need to.
Very good. And Jeff, thank you especially for coordinating all of this effort along with all of the rest of your job that I'm sure is being done efficiently as always. So I appreciate that. So thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we have a motion in a second, and we'll do roll call vote. Tulkey?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Alberti? Aye. Mickelson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And we are on to the report of the naming committee and the recommendations.
The naming committee was led by two administrators. Here to present the findings of that committee is Dr. Teresa Boyson.
Good evening. Exciting news after seeing the building. Now we can, with your recommendation, give the building a name. But we had our naming committee, we met, we had 14 people on that committee. The committee, we followed.
Teresa, excuse me. We did have one person wanting to address us on this topic, and I should have had her start right away, so I apologize for that. Sue, if you'll come forward and give us your name and your address, you have five minutes.
I'm Sue Knight, 7014 West 56th Street, and a property owner in the Sioux Falls School District. Forty-nine percent of my property taxes are designated for the district. Thomas Jefferson High School, a school for current and future students. Thomas Jefferson helped plan and build our country, delineating the rights and privileges of our citizens, but only for our white male citizens. Women and slaves did not enjoy the same rights and privileges. Now we know differently. Thomas Jefferson owned more than 600 slaves and freed only seven of them. He felt it was right to own other people, just like his chairs, tables, pots and pans, and livestock. Now we know differently. In 1767, at age 24, Jefferson inherited 52 slaves from his father. The next year, he began construction of his Monticello plantation. In 1773, Jefferson inherited 135 slaves from his father-in-law. By 1776, Jefferson was one of the largest planters in Virginia. Of course, Jefferson didn't do the bulk of the planting. His slaves worked under the baking summer sun and in the frigid winters to create the reputation the Monticello gardens continue to receive, but Jefferson has always gotten the credit. Now we know differently. In 1769, Jefferson proposed laws in the state of Virginia that severely restricted free blacks from entering or living in Virginia. He also proposed that children should be banished if their fathers were of African origin. The laws also proposed to exile any white woman who had a child with a black man. Any person who violated these laws would be in jeopardy of a lynch mob. Now we know differently. In 1785, Jefferson wrote to one of his colleagues that black people were mentally inferior to white people, claiming the entire race was incapable of producing a single poet. He called his slaves "poor creatures" and felt they lacked tenderness, grief, imagination, and the beauty that others had, referring to whites. Jefferson's slaves regularly endured violence, including whippings. Physical abuse seemed natural to keep his property in line. Now we know differently. It is believed that Jefferson's father-in-law took a slave, Betty Hemmings, and fathered six children by her. One of those children was Sally Hemmings. Then Jefferson fathered one or more children by Sally Hemmings, all while he was married and felt this was morally and ethically his right. Now we know differently. Jefferson was elected U.S. President in 1800. The Constitution provided for the counting of slaves as three-fifths of the others or whites. States with more slaves were proportioned more electoral votes. This is how Jefferson became president. Even though we continue to have voting rights disparities, now we know differently. In 1806, Jefferson denounced the international slave trade, and in 1807, he signed the Act prohibiting importation or exportation of slaves from abroad. However, domestically, he still believed in the moral right to own other human beings. Now we know differently. In 1824, Jefferson proposed a national plant and slavery by the U.S. government by purchasing African-American children for $12.50 each. Jefferson felt this was the right thing to do. Now we know differently. Jefferson kept meticulous records about his slaves, plants, animals, and weather. Today, we continue to keep crop, livestock, and weather records, but do not have slaves. Now we know differently. Over time, Jefferson sold some of his slaves to pay for the mounting debt at Monticello. In 1827, the remaining 130 slaves were sold to pay the debts of Jefferson's estate. Individuals and families were being sold like farm animals and were often split up to pay for his debts. Now we know differently. From January to October 2012, the Smithsonian opened an exhibit called "Slavery at Jefferson's Monticello: The Paradox of Liberty" at the National Museum of American History. Now we know differently. Therefore, given Jefferson's legacy, no one should want any of our students to give up their dignity and have to walk through the doors of a school named after Thomas Jefferson. As Sioux Falls and our schools become more diverse, we should want them to be able to hold their heads high and be proud that they attend a school named after a good person by all standards. Decades ago, Washington High School was named after another slave owner. Lincoln High School was named after the president who freed the slaves. If we don't know or understand our history, we are doomed to repeat it, which seems to be the case here. I urge you to reject the naming of any school after Thomas Jefferson and request that you reconvene the naming committee to come up with a more the naming committee to come up with a more suitable name. So no student has to spend his or her school day feeling inferior, knowing Thomas Jefferson was a slave supporter, and owned more than 600 people as slaves. Because now we know differently. Thank you. And I apologize, but I need to run. I have another meeting at start six, and I'm on the agenda there, too. Thank you.
Dr. Boyson?
Good evening. Tonight, I bring you the recommendations from the naming committee. The naming committee was combined following policy FF, naming school facilities. The committee was made up of students, teachers, parents, community members, and administrators, and a board rep, a school board represent representative. We had 14 people on the committee. Our goal was to come up with a name for the new Northwest High School and the new Southeast Middle School. We looked at the over 2,200 names submitted, whether in writing or online through our survey, and worked through the process of coming up with two names that we feel will serve Sioux Falls for a long time. The name for the high school is Jefferson High School, named after Thomas Jefferson. He this this name rose to the top through the community survey. More than two-thirds of the names submitted for the high school were for Thomas Jefferson. And he was one of our founding fathers, primary author of the Declaration of Independence, third president of the United States, and an advocate for education. And that is our recommendation for the high school, so Jefferson High School. And then we moved on to the middle school. And working through that process, Ben Rifle, that name came up. Ben was born on the Rosebud Reservation, member of the Sioux tribe, graduate of SDSU with a degree in chemistry and dairy science. He went on to get his master's degree at Harvard. And he was one of the first Native Americans to earn his PhD through Harvard also. He spent four years in active duty with World War II. He was a lieutenant colonel. He also was a superintendent at Pine Ridge. And he serves the Native American community throughout his life. He was on the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Hence, he also was instrumental in bringing Arrow Status Center to to South Dakota. So he believed in strong education, promoted South Dakota proudly, and displayed his Lakota heritage throughout his career. And so our committee brings forward the name Jefferson High School and Ben Rifle Middle School for your consideration for the naming of our two new buildings.
Okay. Thank you, Teresa. May I have a motion? I think we'll take him, high school first. If I could have a motion to name the new high school, Thomas Jefferson High School?
So moved to second.
Okay. Discussion.
I will just say, in talking with people in the community, that was the name that came up. I mean, like you said, two-thirds of your time, I think it was like eight out of 10 times of anybody that I talked to, people just felt really strongly and really believed in that. And I guess, speaking responding to the speaker tonight, I think we all have to remember that it's a different time than it was in the 17 and 1800s. And things that were maybe deemed as appropriate during that timeframe, as she said, we do know better. And we need to assess that based on the standards that were people were held to at that time. And thankfully, we're not in that time. But I think there's still a lot of great things to be learned from Thomas Jefferson for our students. And I don't know of any politician or human being otherwise that's perfect. And so I think it's a great opportunity for students to learn about the legacy and the great things that he did do for our country.
Thank you.
Controversial as well.
Makes for good discussion.
Yep. And to that, I would say that I did happen to be the school board representative on that committee. And we did have very good discussions surrounding what were appropriate social norms in the late 1700s, early 1800s. We didn't discount that in our conversation. But the 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 good that he did, the, you know, the author of the Declaration of Independence, the the leadership that he provided at the outset of the United States, we all benefit from today. And I don't think that 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 is arguable, really. And I think it's a very appropriate name. So further discussion? If not, we have a motion in a second to name the new high school, Thomas Jefferson High School. We'll do a roll call vote. Tulkey?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Alberti, aye. Mickelson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. The new high school will be named Thomas Jefferson High School, proudly. And the middle school, Ben Rifle, has been the name submitted by the naming committee. I would ask for a motion in a second on that.
So moved to second.
Okay. Discussion on Ben Rifle Middle School.
I would like, if if possible, to also include his Lakota name, Lone Feather, and also the appropriate Lakota spelling and dialect usage. I've reached out to some family members of his, and there's a little controversy of how that's going to be. So that still needs to be worked out. But I would love to see that included in the naming and signage for the Ben Rifle Middle School.
Okay. It's a good suggestion. We will take that under consideration as we move forward. Any other questions or comments?
You know, I not being from South Dakota originally, I had to do a little research and was just impressed with everything that he has done for the state of South Dakota. So I think it's a great name for for our new middle school.
Thank you.
And I think to that point, what a great person for our students to research and learn more about. There are many adults who don't know about the things that he's done. So another great opportunity to learn about the namesake of why your school is was or why that name was selected for your school. So another great person to bring to the forefront.
Very good. Five times elected to Congress in District One, which when he was in Congress representing South Dakota, was the West River District.
It was East River.
Sorry. Pardon me. And I mean, I just think that you just can't you can't discount the fact that he brought himself to where he was because of an excellent education, both K-12 and obviously PhD from Harvard, and just an upstanding citizen that I think we all can be very proud of. And in 1970, I heard him give a graduation address at Washington High School here. I wasn't very excited about being dragged to my older brother's graduation. But when when Ben Rifle started to speak, it became clear to me that he was an important person, someone that I should listen to. I didn't listen well enough all those years ago to remember what he said. But he was an impressive speaker. So again, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We will do a roll call vote. Tulkey?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Alberti, aye. Mickelson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
And again, proudly named the new middle school, Ben Rifle Middle School. On to the legislative update.
Okay. Our next report is the legislative update. Here to bring us up to speed on that topic is Mr. Veek.
I know. I had to print these out because I can't. Thank you. We have 40-some bills to get through. It's our first update on legislation. I will go fast. And if it's okay, stop me if you want to change or ask deeper questions. So we'll start on page one, and we can go on. House Bill 1001 recalculates the allocation for sped disability every two years instead of every three years. We support that bill. Just keeps him up to date. House Bill 1021 would no longer require the district to mail bonds back to unsuccessful bidders. We support that. Saves on postage. We just destroy the bill or the bonds instead. House Bill 1040 would change the South Dakota Opportunity Scholarship to essentially allow homeschool students to participate if they get a 24 on their ACT, and the parents can provide a transcript of completed necessary coursework. Our position on that would be we would support it if an amendment said basically anybody that gets a 24 can get the scholarship. Absent that, we would recommend being neutral on the bill. 1044 would allow parents transferred or move to a military installation within a school district's boundary to enroll their children in that school district based on documentation displaying that required move. We suggest an amendment to the bill. There's a line that says, including enrollment in a specific school or program within the school district. We would recommend that it be amended to read, including enrollment in a specific school or program within the district if the student qualifies and the placement is appropriate. Challenge Center comes to mind there. House Bill 1048 would allow a sixth reason for an executive session to discuss public safety. We support that bill. 1051 creates a South Dakota State Seal of Civics. The seal would be awarded by the state to students who obtained a high-level proficiency in civics. It's voluntary. The seal would be affixed to the diploma and the coursework required to exceed the social studies minimum required for graduation. We recommend no position on the bill. House Bill 1058 is our first suggested key bill. This bill requires the provision of certain services regarding special education to students receiving alternative instruction. We recommend opposing the bill. Its purpose is to establish eligibility for related services for individuals who are homeschooled. Eligibility and the provision of related services in special ed is defined in the IDEA and South Dakota Administrative Rule. All children are eligible for child find, which are evaluations, if suspected of having a disability. For youth who are homeschooled and choose to attend the Sioux Falls School District for a portion of the day and meet the eligibility and service provision rules of IDEA. The IP determines the specialized instruction in related services in accordance with the law rules. So that's a key bill. And oppose, as it's written. The bill, sorry, 1065 removes the requirement that homeschool students take standardized assessments at grades 3, 8, and 11. We recommend opposing the bill. Requiring homeschool students to comply with the requirement for standardized assessment at those grades helps ensure students learning in alternate environments are held to the same standard as those learning in public schools. House Bill 1066, another recommended to be a key bill. It adds a civics test to the high school graduation requirements. All students in public, private, and homeschool would be required to answer correctly 70% of 50 questions on a test in order to receive a diploma. The questions would come from 100 questions that form the question bank for the United States Citizenship Test. We're recommending opposing the bill. 13143 establishes that the purpose of the Board of Education standards is to develop standards and practices to ensure that by the end of 12th grade, all students have education skills to enter adulthood as responsible members of society. This bill would circumvent that process that's already in law. House Bill 1083 is simply a placeholder, no position. House Bill 1108 would prohibit public schools from from providing instruction in gender identity or gender expression in grades K through 7. Recommending opposition to the bill. The vague language of this bill may prevent a school district from providing counseling or accommodations on a one-to-one basis. House Bill 1109 would eliminate the equalization of other funds, which were previously outside the formula. They're being phased in right now. An example of that has been franchise tax. We suggest opposing the bill. A key to the 2016 formula reform was the equalization of major other funds that had been outside the formula. These other funds tend to favor a few districts to the detriment of most others. Since the 2016 legislature did the hard work of putting in place the process to equalize those revenues over a five-year period, we shouldn't go backwards and reverse that equalization. House Bill 1113 would require school boards to enact a Code of Ethics and Professional Responsibilities Initiative, which will prohibit teachers from any political activity in the classroom or while performing duties as a teacher. The district already has policy GBI, Staff Participation in Political Activities, which is reviewed annually with staff, not just teachers. We oppose the bill to the annual three-hour continuing teacher education required as part of it. It's excessive. The district's in-service time, professional development, collaboration time is consumed with other priorities. To pay teachers for this training outside their workday would cost the district about $117,200 roughly annually. We seldom have policy violation concerning GBI. Certainly not enough to spend almost $120,000 annually. If the bill were amended and the three-hour continuing teacher education piece were removed, the district would be neutral on the bill. House Bill 1116 would require a school district to attain parent guardian prior written consent for non-emergency invasive physical examination or screening. The consent must be separate and distinct for each examination or screening conducted. Non-emergency invasive physical examination or screening is defined as any medical exam that involves exposure of private body parts or any act during the examination that includes incision, insertion, or injection into the body, but does not include a hearing, vision, or scoliosis screening. We oppose the or recommend opposing the bill. The school district sees it as unnecessary. The federal PPRA requires that local school districts create a policy on administration of physical examinations or screenings that the school may administer to a student and provide notice and offer an opportunity to opt the student out of participation in any. This would go beyond those federal requirements. House Bill 1127 reinstates two-year averaging into the general fund state aid formula for declining enrollment districts. Two-year averaging was eliminated by the 2016 legislature, essentially to pay for the small school factor, increasing from 20 to 25% in that same bill. We recommend opposing it. If the legislature has the funding to pay for two-year averaging, it should use those funds to make the 0.7% one-time state aid increase from last year permanent instead. Last year, you recall, we got 1.7, but 0.7, that was one time. And that's what the index factor called for. So right now, we're building on a base of 1%. House Bill 1131 is a placeholder. House Bill 1139 eliminates the maximum capital outlay levy per student for districts with extremely high valuation per student. We recommend opposing the bill. The 2016 capital outlay limitations are too restrictive. Growth of 3% or inflation, whichever is less, plus new construction. But this is the last group of schools that needs that restriction relaxed. If there is not some across-the-board fix, those schools that are below average in per-student revenue should be the ones to have the restrictions eased, not the highest districts. House Bill 1140 would prohibit a high school activities association from restricting or prohibiting the video recording of live broadcasts of any high school interscholastic activity or event by any television, radio, internet, or other broadcasting organization. We recommend opposing a bill, not allowing the South Dakota High School Activities Association to restrict, i.e., charge for the rights to cover. State tournaments will lead to membership increases to cover the costs of conducting the events. As an aside, this is me talking. This bill is going to pass. The legislature should place a similar restriction on state universities. Makes sense, right? House Bill 1141 is an adjutant and raises the maximum capital outlay levy per student for districts with extremely high valuation per student from $2,800 to $3,800. It's a 36% increase. Recommend opposing the bills for the same reason as that other bill we discussed. Those are already the highest valuation per student district in the state. House Bill 1144 would require both the receiving district and district of reverence to approve annually a location for the receiving school district to enter the district. a location for the receiving school district to enter the district of residence of an open-rolled student for pickup and transportation purposes. If both school districts do not agree, the receiving district may not enter the resident district to transport students, and the Secretary of DOE will no longer, will be able to determine a location of pickup in the district of residence to resolve the lack of agreement. Say that really fast, three times. We would recommend being neutral on the bill. We don't travel into our neighbors and our bigger neighbors don't travel into our district. House Bill 1151 would dismiss local control of graduation ceremonies by requiring schools to allow students to sing honor songs during a school honoring or graduation ceremony. As written, this would apply to all students, whereas the wearing of traditional tribal regalia was specific, as passed last year, was specifically to a certain group of students as individuals and did not impact the entire activity or event. The bill would also allow for the beating of graduation caps in addition to the current use of wearing tribal regalia. We oppose the bill. I recommend that. The district is in favor of students originally defined by this law being able to personally honor their heritage and culture. This bill would now allow all individuals to dictate the graduation ceremony program that is intended for all students. This law would have unintended consequences for public events meant to honor the achievements of all students, and we're recommending it to be a key bill. 1155 would add social workers to the list of school professionals with privileged communications with students when acting in their official capacity, similar to school counselors. We would recommend supporting the bill. Our social workers adhere to the social worker code of ethics, which requires confidentiality. House Bill 1169 is another placeholder. A lot of people with big ideas that they just can't get on the paper, I guess. 1175 establishes an early learning advisory council, defined its members and its responsibilities. We support the bill. See on the contact on that? I'm not. I think it's Deb. Senate Bill 2 increases the special ed extraordinary cost fund allocation from $4 million to $5 million and provides for it to inflate in the future by the index factor. Currently, it's just locked in at $4 million. We support that bill. Senate Bill 3 is an act to create a task force regarding education. The purpose of the task force is to examine the rising number of students in the state who are being identified in need of special ed services, to examine the increasing cost of the services they require, and to develop recommendations for that situation. We suggest an amendment to the bill. Currently, there are no business managers or special ed directors on the proposed task force. We think the special ed directors know a little bit about special education and business managers know a little bit how to pay for it. So we'd like at least one of each on that task force. Other than that, we're good with the bill. Senate Bill 4 revises the procedure for valuing agricultural land. Seems like that changes every 10 years or so. No position. It's recommended. Senate Bill 23 cleans up repealed or obsolete provisions concerning the Department of Ed. No position. Senate Bill 24 revises certain provisions relating to state assessments. It was tabled in committee earlier today, I think. Maybe it was last week. It's already, it's been tabled. Senate Bill 31 attempts to require staff providing behavior support to individuals to undergo a state background check. The responsibility of who is paying for the background check is unclear. We take no position on the bill. The background check requirement for school employees currently set forth in South Dakota law is more stringent because it specifies a South Dakota state check and an FBI check. Senate Bill 49 is an act to declare void the transgender procedure adopted by the South Dakota High School Activities Association and to establish a detriment in identifying a student's sexual identity for the purpose of participation in high school activities. That bill, we oppose it, but that bill was killed earlier today. Senate Bill 52 adds a required civics course of the high school graduation requirements effective July 2022. We oppose the bill. The responsibility for establishing K through 12 content standards in high school graduation requirement rests with the Board of Education standards. With high school graduation requirements recently revised to allow students more flexibility, adding a new required course seems contradictory. Civics education can be strengthened without adding an additional high school course. Senate Bill 55 would require, beginning in the 2019-2020 school year, the national motto of the United States, "In God We Trust," to be displayed in each public school in a prominent location. Gives discretion to the school principal on the form of the display. We recommend opposing the bill. School districts should have the discretion on whether to display the national motto in a prominent place in the school building. Patriotic displays and activities have a place within the public school system. Activities such as flying their flag, commemoration of patriotic days and events, singing the national anthem at events, reciting the pledge of allegiance, and allowing for exceptions are all patriotic activities currently present in schools across the state. When patriotic activities are already prevalent in the public school system, what purpose does mandating schools to display "In God We Trust, Truly Serve" except to endorse a specific religious belief? Such mandate might have the unintended consequences of alienating students who do not have the same religious beliefs and may inhibit the perception that all students are welcome regardless of religious belief. May also cost school districts money defending the practice. I would add that in. We recommend opposing the bill. Senate Bill 59 prohibits school districts and other public entities from entering into a settlement agreement with a party involving a claim for monetary damages or equitable relief in which the settlement agreement requires nondisclosure or confidentiality of the terms of the settlement. We oppose the bill. Confidentiality is a key component to reach a settlement agreement among the parties to a legal dispute. Without this component, settlement options will become less appealing to each of the parties involved in the dispute and therefore increases the likelihood each party expends more resources with litigation. Senate Bill 77 allows candidates to run for more than one public office as long as the pay only exceeds $5,000 for no more than one of the offices. No position suggested on that bill. Senate Bill 84, the bill would allow school personnel to possess and administer opioid antagonists to anyone experiencing a suspected opiate overdose. We would recommend amending the bill. We have school resource officers who possess Narcan should a student or family member need it. We would recommend clarifying language to more closely match 1333A48. Specifically, clarification on when the medication could be distributed, for instance, during school hours. Training criteria, adverse responses, and stabilizing patience. Schools have the capabilities for that. Additional immunity language to better protect school staff. There's quite a bit more there. You can read online or in your materials. Senate Bill 88 is another placeholder. No position. Senate Bill 90, the bill removes the requirement for school board members and other elected officials to update their financial interest report annually. We suggest supporting the bill. This probably affects you guys more than us, so if you have an opinion on that, we'd like to hear it. Senate Bill 91 cleans up open meeting requirement language, including limiting the requirement for public comment to regular meetings as defined in statute, rule, or ordinance of the public entity. We support that bill. Or we recommend it. Senate Bill 96 expands application of tax credits for contributions to a private school scholarship granting organization to include perspective on next year's in addition to this year's taxes. We recommend opposing the bill. The program that essentially allows tax dollars to go toward tuition for private schools for a family of four making up to $70,000 should be repealed. We not expanded. We originally were against that bill. Senate Bill 116 is a placeholder. Senate Bill 132 is a placeholder. Senate Bill 146 revises certain provisions regarding licenses for speech-language pathology services. We support the bill. It modifies current language to allow the licensure board to issue a speech pathology assistant license to a paraprofessional applicant and outline the steps for that process. And that's all we've done so far.
Any questions for business manager Veek? Okay. I have a motion to acknowledge the legislative update report.
I'm moved. Second.
Discussion?
I support all the positions as recommended.
And I mean, as we know, I guess more for the public than for us, as we go through the session, we will get this update at each one of our board meetings, and if we believe that it's necessary to change a position, that can be done at any time. So this is our first report, and we will accept it, and we have a motion and a second. We'll do roll call vote. Tulkey?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Alberti, aye. Mickelson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
All right. We'll move right into our last report, which is a fiscal year 19, second quarter finance report, also delivered by Mr. Veek.
This is the report everybody's been waiting for, as usual. We're halfway through the school year, but we're, as you can see in the general fund here, on our expenditure side, we're only about 40% of the way expanded. We don't have a ton of expenditures in July and August. We look like we're on track there, special ed. We're spending a little faster than we had budgeted for because we raised the salaries of our paraprofessionals and the negotiations, and that hadn't been part of the original budget process. We'll amend that as we figure out exactly what that's going to cost us. So it's not, we're not, it's not a surprise that we're spending a little bit faster in special ed than we thought because they have so many more EAs than we do in the general fund. But I thought I would, because the tax bills just went out, I thought I would use this time to kind of remind everybody. And it kind of goes along with our earlier capital report or the bond referendum report. Dr. Maher gave dozens of talks on the bond, and then through Doug Morrison fashion, this one slide kind of combined three. I'll just explain it just for a second. One of those is a comparison of our levy to our neighbors, just to kind of ease the public that we're good stewards with the money, with their money, their tax dollars, that we don't, we're not spendthrifts and all that good stuff. And so this was last year, taxes payable in 2018. We were actually, this is why this is a combo slide. We weren't at 840. We were actually at 827. We were three cents below our nearest neighbor. So we were the, of all our neighbors, we were fairly close to Canton, but fairly far from others as far as the levy that our taxpayers have to pay. So that was one slide. And then we had the proposal that said we were gonna, we were gonna raise, if we passed the bond, it was going to cost an additional 13 cents per thousand to our taxpayers. And this is kind of what it would look like, actually, in year two. In year one, we had already set our capital levy and our spending priorities. So we said, we're just going to levy 13 cents on the bond redemption in the first year. And then in years two and on, this combination of the capital levy and the bond levy would be $3. And then, much to my chagrin, Dr. Maher said if we combined that 13 cents, then we'd be the second lowest district in the area as far as levy. And I kind of said, well, that's not taking into account, we're going to lower some other levies. And I think other districts are going to be, so I always put the kind of proviso on that, that would be if nothing else changed, and we just added 13 cents. So the levy, the new levies are out, and this is kind of how it looks. This is one of those other slides that got combined into the first one I showed you. And everything that's to the left of here is updated. This is info you got to get from a different source. But our levy actually didn't, our total levy for owner occupied really didn't change. It shows a penny less, but there's rounding in both slides, and they're within a tenth of a penny of each other. So our levy basically held, and we kind of knew that was going to be the case. We did add our bond redemption levy, like we said it would, of 13 cents, but other levies dropped, so that's why our levy held. Our closest neighbor now is still Canton. Actually, yeah, it's Canton. They're 10th out of 11. They went up to 855. I think their sped levy increased a little bit, and they had a bond pass as well. So anyway, bottom line is, we kept our promise on the 13 cents. That's what we levied for on the bond redemption, and we're still the lowest levying district in the greater Sioux Empire area. Anyway, thought I'd throw that relevant to this topic and relevant to an earlier topic. Thought I'd throw that in. Any questions?
Questions for business manager Veek. Good report. I mean, it's just a good report. Thank you again for your hard work. No questions. May I have a motion and a second to acknowledge the second quarter financial report?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? If not, we will do roll call vote on that. Tulkey?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Alberti, aye. Mickelson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
All right. And that brings us to the end of the agenda. Anything else to come before the board? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And we'll do a roll call vote on that as well. Tulkey?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Alberti, aye. Mickelson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.